Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of 24 September. We'll have rather brief session today. First item will be a joint meeting with the Board of Health on an air quality report concerning the basement here at Town Hall, sent by Cardinal ATC from West Springfield. We have some appointments, abatements, and some other staff updates. Are there first or any announcements? Do you have any announcements?
I don't have any at this point.
Just one, Planning Board session on 2nd of October, an application filed by Southland Log Homes, property owned by Richard Thayer for the premises at West Street, West Hatfield, Sessors Map 211 Lot 8, currently his own business for the purpose of building a log home sales model, if anyone's interested in that. Anyone here for a community forum? Okay, so you know, minutes, is there a motion to approve minutes? Selecting meeting of 27 August.
I'll make a motion, but I've got one change in here. Down on medical marijuana study group, so the Planning Board, since this is an advisory group, Selectmen, let's go talk to Mr. Winter about withdrawing his resignation, about reinstating. I think that would, would that fit in there, reinstating his resignation instead of withdrawing?
No, we wanted him to withdraw.
Okay, we just want him to take it out. So then, I move that we accept the minutes as rep. Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Recently, town conducted air quality assessment of the basement of Town Hall, and we have today Mr. Dennis St. John from representing Cardinal ATC of West Springfield to walk us through that report and give us some information about it, help folks understand it.
Are there any particular questions?
We'll get there right now. I understand this was put on here by the Board of Health. Corey, did you want to introduce it?
Well, basically, we cannot interpret it. We don't know what all your terms mean here. It was just Greek to us. I might as well have been reading Latin, and I know Latin.
Yeah, what I tried to do is look at what the normal was versus what the conditions were, and it looks like those, we're below the normal in a lot of the avenues here, a lot of the areas here.
Yeah, the, well, there's a moisture issue in the basement, which I'm sure you're all aware of.
Always.
And if the, when you have a moisture issue, eventually, you're gonna, the conditions are right to have a mold, a mold issue. Okay? I mean, if you look at the floor here, you can see, you know, with the wax, or not the wax, but necessarily, but probably some of it, but the mastic that's holding down these floor tiles, you know, is coming, coming up.
Yeah, that was because they used the wrong mastic. They should have used a water, an epoxy base instead of a water base.
If you have a water issue here, and then the type of issue you have here is kind of a chronic issue. It's not a one time, like it just rained and you had a roof leak and something like that. So when you, when you have a chronic issue with repeated water damage, and you have, you know, a food source in here, which is virtually anything, sheet rock, you know, joint compound, I mean, it's anything the mold will eat. I mean, it's, it can be an issue. Now, we did some surface sampling in here of, you know, of this discoloration around the, around the floor tiles, and there was really no fungal growth there, which, that's good. I mean, obviously, and with the tile floor like this, you can, you can, you can treat it. I mean, you can, you can keep this clean. Eventually, of course, you'd like to deal with whatever drainage issues you have. You have to try and lower the water table so that you don't, you don't get this, you know, repeat damage, I guess is what you call it. Now, as far as the carpeted areas go, I mean, there's only so much you can do. If you repeatedly water damage a carpet, I mean, you're eventually gonna have a mold issue. Now, when I first came here talking with Phil, and he had said that the carpeting in that, in the office for the-
Council on Aging.
Yeah, that was, that was going, you know. We did some carpet sampling in here, and I don't know if he could, you know, but if you look at the, the fungal was in a moderate range, but the bacterial was, was very high, you know, and the type of bacteria, in a, in a, in an area where you have human habitation, you expect to find gram, what they call gram-positive bacteria. Those are human skin shed bacterials, you know, they're just associated with people. When, when you have a predominance of gram-negative bacteria, which is what we had in this, in this situation, I mean, those are environmental bacteria, they're mostly waterborne. I mean, they are foodborne as well to a certain extent, but they're, they're really indicative of past and current, you know, water problems. And I think that carpeting in the, in the stairwell out here in the back was, you know, inaccessible, was it 30 million, I think, 30 million colonies?
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, I mean, that's very high. And that, that should go, my recommendation is the carpeting down here should just go, you know, and be replaced, and I would suggest you, you know, speak with a, you know, a flooring expert as far as, I, I would think you'd want to put a tile of some sort down here, something that can be cleaned, you know, until you can deal with the underlying moisture issue here. Now, as far as the air samples go, we did air sampling in a number of the offices, and, and, you know, compared to the outdoors, you know, the air inside, I mean, had a lower, you know, lowered total fungal content, but sometimes that can be a little misleading. I mean, it's, I mean, anytime you do a sampling, you always want to compare the indoors and outdoors, and what you kind of hope is that what you have indoors is the same type of stuff that's outdoors, and hopefully a little less of it, or roughly the same amount, you know. Here in a building that you don't have any individual filtration of the, of the outdoor air, I mean, if you had relatively the same numbers, that wouldn't, that would not be surprising. The laboratory that I use is MLab P&amp;K in New Jersey, and they, they furnish what they call a mold score, where they, they take what they find indoors, what we find outdoors, and then they, they will rank, you know, the, the different species, you know, how much of it was found outdoors, how much of it was found indoors, and they create, they create a mold score, and generally, anything under 150, I mean, the mold range score goes from 100 to 300, that's where it starts, okay? And 300 is, that's, it doesn't go any higher than that. But between 100 and 150, the mold scores are generally indicative that what you've got in here is what's outside, you know, and there's not a heck of a lot you can do about that. Between, you know, from 250 to 300, it's, those scores are indicative of, you know, that you've, you've got a mold amplification site in here. There was a site that's just, you know, it's conducive to mold growth, which just means there's something to eat and there's some water, you know, that's about it. Between 150 and 250 is, you know, it's just like a middle ground, it just, and that's pretty much where most of these scores fell. You know, is, are they a little, you know, a little of concern? I guess, you know, but, but not of tremendous concern. You know, I mean, typically, you know, what people call pathogenic or disease-causing type molds, I mean, were not predominant. The, the only reason the scores are up there is because some of the molds that were found indoors really weren't found outdoors, you know. So, but that's, again, anytime you do air sampling, it's a point in time measurement. You know, that's not gonna tell you what it was like two months ago, it's not gonna tell you what it's gonna be like two months from now. So air sampling is just, like I said, it's a point in time, point in time measurement. I mean, had the scores been in the 300 range, I mean, we'd have certainly a different recommendation. But like I said, the underlying thing here is the, is the, is the water issue. It's just something that needs to be addressed. The, you know, I always tell people that mold spores, I mean, you're not keeping, you're not keeping them out of here. I mean, they're coming in, I mean, you're bringing them in on your clothes, on your feet, they're coming in through all of, all of, you know, around windows, doors, you know, the building infiltration, I mean, they're coming in and you're not keeping them out. And mold spores are like seeds, you know, you could, you could take your garden, you can, you can plant it, you can compost it, you can do whatever you want, but if it doesn't rain, or you don't water it, I mean, what happens? Pretty much nothing. And that's the way it is. The only thing you can control in here is the moisture, and that's what, that's what needs to be done.
Okay, so basically, if we got a dehumidifier, ran dehumidifier-
Dehumidifiers would help.
24/7?
Yeah, they would help. I mean, I would prefer if you're gonna do that, I would, I would see if you could get them hard-plumbed somewhere where somebody doesn't have to empty them every single day, you know, they would drain, because sometimes they tend to get forgotten, things happen. But yeah, dehumidifiers help.
Get rid of the rugs.
You want to keep the, you want to keep the humidity range, you know, below 60%.
So what's your recommendation is to remove the rug, the carpeting, and Board of Health office, the building inspector's office, and in the hallway?
Yeah.
And it's gone in the Council on Aging's room, so that's-
It is gone already, okay.
Yeah.
And like I said, I would deal with a floor consultant as far as what they think might be the best thing to be put down here. I mean, I don't know what, what the plans are, you know, as far as any additional drainage that's gonna be put in, you know, around the building, or if that's something that's not gonna be in the foreseeable future, then I would, like I said, I would, I would talk with a flooring contractor to see what, what his best recommendation would be.
Corey?
Well, no, he's, he's telling me what I really wanted to know, but to me, this is a really a scientific report.
Put it in layman's terms, is what you want.
I would, I would ask the Selectmen to give me answers to all this stuff, and I don't think they could either, because we had one on the Board of Health. And it's just all these different percentages up and down and all that, which is good, but in layman's terms, you should have written it a little more for the average person.
I tried.
I know, you went scientific.
That's why we asked them to come.
I know that, I know you had to. My wife said, if they didn't come, then why are you having the meeting? I said, I wouldn't know. But as I say, that, I just didn't understand any of it. And finally, the four or five of us that were there said the same thing, and that's why we called this meeting.
And that's what I tried to look at in the beginning of what the normals were, and then versus what the, the levels were, and it seems like all the, the levels were under what, what the normals were, or within the normal.
Well, as I said, the total fungal counts indoors were considerably lower than they were outdoors, but some of, some of them, there were different types indoors than there were outdoors, which affects that mold score. You know, if, say, if say your outdoor air was, you know, 90% of the mold that was found in the outdoor air was like clatusporium, which is probably the most common fungal species in, in temperate climates, you know, in North America, you know, and what you found indoors, 90% of it was, was trichomium or something, you know, you'd say like, well, even though the level indoors is lower than it is outdoors, we're not dealing with the same thing here, so there's, there's probably an issue.
Okay, so what would you say the air quality difference from the inside versus the outside would be in a percentage basis? It's 50% good or bad, or it's 80% good in here?
It's not terrible for a basement, let's put it that way.
But we're not talking about, we're talking about for human-
Yeah, well, see, that's-
The Council on Aging Office is 3.8 times better-
Yeah.
... quality inside in that office than it was outside.
Yeah.
3.8133.
So the air was better inside here than outside, is what you're saying?
One thing you have to understand is, like, I mean, this isn't like, you know, like a chemical exposure, or something that where OSHA has established a permissible exposure limit. You know, there's, there's no such thing for the molds, you know, there's not, because, you know, I couldn't say, okay, we got 1,000 colonies of clatusporium, you know, in a per cubic meter of air, that's safe. Well, no, it could very be, could very well be bothersome for somebody with an asthmatic condition, or some, some other person. Somebody may not be bothered at levels 100 times higher than that. So the, because there's no dose and response, you can't say that 500 colonies here is, is fine, you know, indoors as compared to anything else, because people's individual responses are so dramatically different that there are no established levels that you can say, okay, this, this indoors level is now safe.
Okay, how about for the average person?
For the average person, yes, for the average person, you know, otherwise normally healthy individual, I mean, the mold scores indicate that, to me, it indicates that there's a, you know, there's a moisture problem here, but it doesn't indicate that, you know, that there's any particular, you know, imminent mold hazard for the normal human being, you know. I mean, I've been into buildings with a fellow-
Any recommendations besides a dehumidifier and taking up the carpet?
Well, I don't know what the cleaning regimen is here, but, you know, but, I mean, if you're gonna put down, I mean, hopefully, you're not gonna put any more carpeting down in here, you know?
No, there'll be no more carpeting in here.
Okay, and I don't, I don't know what, what they use for, for vacuuming, but if they, when they vacuum the floors, if you've got, you know, a vacuum that's fitted with a HEPA-type filter, I would definitely recommend those. There's a lot, a lot of the other ones you just-
Yeah, where we're not spreading the germ?
Exactly, exactly.
Or the spores, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, and this can serve as a guideline for future, if we find out in the future that there's a problem, can this report be used as a guideline?
See, that's, that's what I was trying to tell you about-
Point in time.
Point in time measurements, you know, for the, because, I mean, it's gonna be different seasonally. You know, it's gonna be different seasonally, because you get different molds, different, different seasons.
But I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is, if we went through the same report next year, at least it would be a level that we could say this was done in September, and these were the scores, and if it was done in August of next year, different conditions, I understand, but is, would this serve as a fair way, a fairly decent base?
Well, they would generate another mold score depending on what was, what was in the outdoor air.
Okay. All right, so it all hinges on the outside air-
Pretty much.
-based on the inside.
Because, I mean, that changes, you know, I mean, you could, you could take samples in four consecutive days and probably get, you know, four different levels, you know, of what's in the outdoor air, because that changes all the time.
Think we had some report was no major health hazard?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Ellen, did you have some?
I did. As the Board of Health, we've been in contact with the state, I've been discussing the findings and what's taken place here with Mike Feeney, who is air quality on the state. The biggest issue is that there are no standards that have been set, so the state actually recommends no mold or no mold testing, such as this report that was done. Now that we have this report, the town owns this report, and we have to look at this report, there is mold everywhere, outside and inside, that's a given, and I think what we need to be cautious of is determining what an average person is, and that may be something that isn't necessarily what can, what we have here, in that we have a highly vulnerable population with the senior center, and people who are working in this basement, and these offices really were not designed to be offices when the building was built. So the carpeting, you know, definitely needs to come out, take a look at the cleaning practices, but back in 2003, there was an air quality report that was done in the town because we had to shut the Town Hall down for a day or two, based on some fumes. Both Corey and I were here with Mike Feeney, we walked, we did testing in the whole building, and the report that came out, there is still a copy of it, and there's a copy that we have now. A major contributor towards what is happening in here is how it's graded outside the building, the landscape, the shrubbery, there were recommendations made specific to that to minimize any kind of water damage, mold issue that would be occurring down in here. A second facet to this is that we have construction going on, and the Board of Health has experienced it, and I've been in here in and out a couple of times, and certainly talking with the Janie of the senior center and other people, that there's debris and stuff coming in, and I'm not sure that there's been any proper ventilation system that has been put in place temporarily or looked at permanently. The state in the, in that it does not recommend mold testing or have any guidelines by which to be able to compare, so if you have a level of 100 versus a level of 300, that sort of doesn't mean anything to the state in how to go about remedying that. It just says that you have mold. So there is a guideline, a pamphlet, a booklet on mold remediation in schools and commercial buildings that needs to be followed, and I'm not sure if that's been taken a look at here in this situation. Again, as the Board of Health, we're looking at the vulnerability of the population, the people coming through, we're concerned about people becoming ill, becoming sick, there have already been a few people that have had to go to the doctor because of different exposures in here and their reactions to them. The senior center is serving food, and they also have exercise class down here, and I, it would not be appropriate to have people exercise in this environment while this construction is going on. So I've discussed with Janie as a possibility of looking at an alternative site for that, because you don't want to be breathing that deep into your lungs, and if it is a, an older population, we certainly have to look at that. The other thing is the food that is served here. I've been in the kitchen where it's been dirty, there's been dust and debris, so food quality and the safety of the food could be compromised, and I don't think we can take that lightly, nor can we take that as, you know, happening and being okay. So we've also discussed the possibility of an alternative site temporarily of the senior center and their meals provided because of what's happening here. So, you know, we know we have moisture, we know that there's a, a chronic issue that's taking place, but then we also have the new construction that's happening, and has what's down here been taken into account, and what is happening up there, how that's gonna affect down here, plus the surrounding building. I'm not sure that from the 2003 report, that we made any headway with regard to grading of the building and how the moisture comes in. This also has been what the state calls an, an unseen natural disaster that's occurred. This is not, we're not the only place experiencing this, but because of the amount of moisture and rain that's happened over the summer, this has been a problem in a number of towns and cities throughout the state. So they're seeing just tons of it happening, but, you know, our position as the Board of Health is the safety of the people who are in this building working, and also coming into this building for whatever reason. And we also have to look at the, you know, vulnerability of the population coming in, typically infants, children, seniors, a little more vulnerable than the people in between. So at this point, that's something that needs to be discussed, because the kitchen cannot operate under these conditions. I'd just like to ask Janie, is there anything else that we discussed at the Board of Health meeting?
No, that, that's basically about-
That covers, yeah.
We did have our COA meeting, and actually Cookie was going to comment on the board and that, and as far as the, what we kind of came up with, hopefully a little solution that might help during construction and that, so I'll let Cookie address that. Is it my turn now?
Well, do you have any questions of me and my conversations and?
No, I think it's really cut and dry on what you said, Ellen, thank you. Question that I have for probably Phil, Paul's not here, but I thought there was no renovation work being done down here at all, but then I find out that the ceiling tiles are being removed and wires are running through the ceiling. I thought everything was from upstairs.
Well, they had to run the electrical from down here up.
That's from the, from the boiler room, but they went down through the kitchen, I mean, through the dining room area here, and stuff like that, so, I mean, I wasn't here to check, I usually try to check it every day to see what they're doing here, but I didn't catch that, and I was told later that that's what they were doing out here. So I thought everything was going up into the gymnasium and then down, like all the wiring and stuff like that, so you wouldn't disrupt anything down here, because the minute you start opening up the ceiling tiles, it's a whole different story. You've got dust and everything else going all over the place.
You gotta, I mean, let's face it, you gotta expect dust down here. If you didn't think there was ever gonna be dust down here during a renovation project, something's wrong.
Well, not from upstairs, Jan.
Absolutely. Did you hear the banging about five minutes ago up there? Come on, these are just tiles, there's nothing in between. The dust is gonna come down, it's gonna, it's gonna come to the ground. It's, I mean, I knew that. I mean, there's, there's some serious pounding going on up there, they're ripping out walls, they're ripping out concrete. You gotta expect it, and I, I know what everybody's saying, but on the other hand, how can you blame, are we gonna shut a project down? We either find a place to move these people or-
We're not blaming the project, we're trying to come up with a solution to the fact so nobody does get sick.
Obviously, I know that, but what I'm saying is, you, you really should have expected. I mean, Mr. Bartlett, you do construction work, wouldn't you think that you would get dust down here during a project like this?
As much as you try and mitigate it on doing the job, there's dust, because people are moving, air is moving.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I also have copies of the mold remediation in schools and commercial buildings that should be looked at, and perhaps that is one of the ways, or that is the standard for the state in how to undergo a project and have it be less toxic to whoever's involved. So that's, that is what the state does recommend at this point, even though there are no guidelines for mold and numbers and, you know, quantity.
Well, the only thing I do have to say is, when you took this report, this was back in July, right? I believe around the 1st of July or someplace like that, is what I read.
July 30th.
Yeah. I mean, it was really humid out, raining out, like the Board of Health had said, so to me, that would make it, this report, as far as the mold issue goes, a little higher than normal. Would you agree, I mean, versus say, this time of year where it's dry out, there's the air quality outside is dry as, rather than being humid?
Well, it's so dependent, I mean, depending on, I mean, mold spores are dispersed, you know, by wind. I mean, sometimes they're, it depends if they're, if they're leaf, a leaf-type mold, some of those are dispersed during a light rain, you know, when the raindrop hits the leaf, mold spores are released. So it's such a day-to-day thing, I mean, if, you could have, you could say, take an outdoor sample a month and a half in July, and come up with whatever it was, 20,000 mold spores per cubic meter of air. Cubic meter of air is 1,000 liters, okay? You could, you could do one the next day, it might be 26,000. The next day, it might be 18,000. I mean, it just, it just depends.
It can fluctuate.
Exactly, I mean, they're, they're living things, you know, and it's-
All right, but it'll be up to us to get the carpets out of here, that'll be the first thing that we need to do, and-
I'd just like to reiterate that there are no, there is no standard for numbers, so that one spore could be a prob, could be problematic for one person, sort of like peanut allergy. So I think looking at the quantity may, may not be the way to go, and certainly not what the state has adopted. And also the, no standards for mold in terms of quantity and numbers, NIH does not recognize any, the World Health Organization, and State of Massachusetts as well, so we just, we need to be aware of that. as well, so, we just, we need to be aware of that.
I don't think the Board of Health wanted to stop the project. I don't know where you got that idea from, Mr. Selectman. What we wanted to do is have a solution for what is going on here.
Right.
We didn't say to shut the project down, so don't ever say that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
You did say that.
Not, not to the Board.
You did say it.
Not to the Board of Health.
Who'd you say it to?
Mr. Leschko.
He's on the Board of Health.
Well, I'm sorry, but it wasn't to the Board of Health, I'm sorry.
Well, just, well, as I say, that isn't our intent, we just want to solve the situation. And if you have to move out of the building for a year, do it.
I agree. I don't, I don't have...
You juggle everything around, and we're not getting anywhere, because we still have the, the mess here with the microbes and the whatever we got.
For which, sir, there are no standards.
That's right.
So, let's...
And that's the state.
You might think about running a negative air machine down here, something, a negative air filtration unit, it would have a filtration. Which you could vent, you could vent out the window to the outdoors.
Oh, it's dirtier out there than it is in here.
But you're exhausting.
Yeah, the air's cleaner in here than it is outside, right?
You know, I, I, I was also thinking, i- is there somebody that can oversee, you know, and take a look and incorporate this into what's happening, so that we can go forward and, you know, make sure that we're doing as much as we can to limit any kind of exposure or health hazard? That's, that's, I think, we don't want to eliminate this just because we think things are happening upstairs.
Well, I, I, I challenge the characterization that we have a health hazard. Uh, we, there's been no conclusion here, and nothing in the report, and no standards exist, that there is a health hazard. So, let's be careful not to being alarmist.
But there is mold.
We care, we, we, yes, there is. And there's outside, it's three, four times more ins, outside than inside. We, it's in people's homes, it's everywhere. So, let's, let's just be careful about how we characterize the situation. Yes, we care about the people, that's number one, and if, uh, people are concerned that, concerning the, the food and the exercise, relocating that activity is, it'd be very helpful during the period of, of construction, but, uh...
Well, the state recommends no mold reports, they do not recognize mold reports.
I, I...
So, because there is mold everywhere. And so, that, if we had gone to them and said, you know, what should we do? They would say, don't do a mold report.
It was more, it was more for air quality, I believe, in here than anything else. It wasn't really a mold.
So, that, that's, uh, you know, to say there's more outside than inside.
I, I, I got that message.
I get that.
A little...
You know, but...
So, the concern that we have is basically the meals, the meal prep.
Meals and exercise.
Okay, and exercise.
And the people that are working down here on a full-time basis.
Okay.
Well...
So, but it's, according to the report, the air quality is of good quality in here.
The report has, we have, we own the report now as a town, but as a standard from the state, it has no meaning.
Right. And those same people that are working here have homes, live in homes, and go to places that could have mold there. So, there's no direct nexus between anything happening to individuals here as opposed to anywhere else.
But there are people who have had illnesses and have been to the doctor.
Mm-hmm.
You know, with certain symptoms of what's happened here, so...
The concern that I would have is the dust with the food, okay? That certainly don't want to have any food, uh, dust around the food. So, the construction workers are going to have to be mindful of that on where they work, and they're going to have to take provisions, make provisions.
Well, and there needs to be temporary ventilation system.
Yep, they can, they can put a fan in the window and should, make sure the doors are shut, and blow it out, um, just like they did in, in Jane's office, okay, when they took up the tiles, they vented it right to the outside.
You had some ideas of where you wanted to move the food and the exercise?
No.
It's not our job.
No, that's, well, Jane.
Whatever, Jane.
Ellen and I had this conversation, my board had this conversation, and, um, back when we shut down because of the, um, furnace room, we ended up using the congregational church, but that was only at a, on a short-term, couple-week thing, and that was it. So, there's no place really to shut down and relocate in town. I, and, so basically, I mean, you're dealing with a mold thing, so if that gets taken care of, and what the board discussed is, this place, if it gets cleaned more often, our dining room and kitchen has not been swept in three weeks, three weeks. Now, Ellen's talking about food. If we take the preventive measure of cleaning more often, then maybe that'll get rid of the dust and whatever is falling and that. But if its town hall is not being cleaned, then why bother? I mean, who's cleaning town hall right now? Can anyone tell me that? Three weeks it hasn't been swept. God knows how long it's been since the floors have been washed down here. I know construction's going on upstairs, and we can accept that, but if you're not cleaning the place, shut the building down. Who's cleaning town hall right now?
Things will change tomorrow.
I hope so. Nothing, nothing's been cleaned down here. And with the increase...
We are having some problems with the contractor.
I understand that, but in the meantime, we used to have the school, the woman comes from the school cleaning that, at least someone has to clean. And with the construction workers, I know, the day I saw you, Phil, I mean, it's not, it doesn't matter. I had construction workers washing their hands in the kitchen sink while the food was in there because there was no soap in the refills in the bathroom.
I put a stop to that.
So, it's little things like this, if we could at least take that preventive measure to try to clean this building, you know, while construction's going on, then we won't have all this. Uh, we do have air conditioning, I keep the doors closed in the dining room because we have air conditioning units and dehumidifier units in there that we run constantly, so we keep the humidity out of there. And when he did the testing, there was nothing in the dining room because of that. Um, we have a dehumidifier here in the hallway that we run, so we are doing this, but it, our, our thing is, it needs to be cleaned.
Well, the concern right now is elderly coming down here, eating out of there, and, and again, I'm going to bring up with the construction, you are going to remain to get dust. I mean...
I understand that, and it's not, as long as the doors are closed and that kind of thing, it's okay. See, there wasn't plastic up, once they put the plastic up and that, it stopped all this. Um...
Yeah, when they started, there was no plastic, and I know they put the plastic up.
Yeah, when they did the construction, they didn't have plastic up, or if you walk through, and that's why I put the sign on the door not to use this, because if you look upstairs in the gym through this door, it's all open up there. If they could put plastic up there, that way it would encase everything and keep it in the working area as opposed to seeping out in different parts of the building.
Right, but as Ellen said, her concern is the elderly coming in, doing their exercises, and eating out of here, so that's my concern as well. And I think it's the whole board, along with the Board of Health. So...
So, can they do, just outsource the meals, like they do home delivery for the next months? And maybe deliver it over to Capewalk, maybe they can use the dining or the recreation hall over there and just have the meals delivered over there as takeouts?
That was one of the things that we did discuss at our meeting here, um, about, and I'm talking to Highland Valley about that, it's just having a location, we need a kitchen, we need, you know, that kind of thing.
All right, and as far as exercise class, then maybe they can go to the, one of the churches that are available, um, and stop it immediately, so we don't have any problems.
We had the Legion too, was another option that we're looking into.
Okay. All right, you got anything else?
Ellen, anything else?
That should, that should take care of...
I think so.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
Jane, anything else? Mr. St. John, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I do have one other thing for you.
Sure.
Jane, I mean, could you, could you let us know as soon as possible what you've really, I mean, which area you want to look at, if it is the, um, Legion, if it's across the street, you know, we, we can, uh, help you get over there. You know, whatever, whatever you need.
The, the, across the street doesn't have it, but at least the Legion, we need a kitchen, basically, that's what we need.
You got a place to warm up, so...
Yeah, that's basically what we need, because we could actually move the steam table we had to there.
Yeah, well, I don't know, does, um, is there still catering going out of there during the, during the week?
Is, who?
Do they still cater?
Yes.
Out of there during the week?
Not during the week.
Not during the week?
They still do catering, huh?
Weekends, if there's a...
Or funerals.
A shower.
Yeah, well, I'm talking, like, uh, say, uh, like, the, um, I know, they do, like, uh, funeral...
They do that.
Yeah, that's what they do on special occasions, but, yes, the Sodan used to use that on a daily basis, but...
Right, not anymore?
They don't.
Okay.
I'm not sure there's a stove there because the stove was sold at...
We don't need a stove.
Okay.
Just a stove.
The stove was gotten rid of. I think if you contact the, the post commander, it's, uh, Tom Tataro, uh, I, I think he'd work with you. I'm, I'm a member of the Legion, but I can't authorize it.
Right.
All right.
But it seems to me that the Legion would be a good location, the downstairs is where the kitchen is. Uh, I think there might be a couple steps down.
Except they have to climb up to get up there.
Yeah, well, no, the downstairs is good.
Yeah, but you still have to go up.
Right.
Yeah, there's a couple stairs, I think, to go down to the downstairs door to get into the, uh...
That was designed for kids, it's cool.
Yeah, you, you have to go upstairs for the restroom.
No, there's restrooms downstairs.
Yeah, but I say, to get up into the building, you've got to climb up.
It's just...
Yeah, that's the only limiting factor, it's not wheelchair accessible.
The men's room is downstairs, the women's room is upstairs.
That's once you get in the building, that's no problem.
That's once you get, well, it is.
I'm saying to get into the building.
There is stairs, so that's kind of a limiting factor.
So, I, I mean, if they set up all the meals for takeouts, like now they bring it to the kitchen and you distribute it on plates and so on, so if they set up everything for home delivery, make up plates, they could deliver them anywhere you wanted to, that, that's open, uh, I mean, the, uh, which we call it over here at Capewalk, has their community room there, they could eat there, they could eat, uh, maybe it could even be arranged at the school or something like that. But it's a matter of just putting it together and figuring out where you're going to go. What I, I, what I miss here is, in this building, is every, uh, every week in the back here on the ambulance building, there's a job meeting. And every Friday, there's a job meeting over there, and if there's any questions, any problems that come up, they're addressed at the job meeting. This building has probably only one job meeting since it started a couple weeks ago, and this should be corrected, and I'm not sure, between you and Paul, you need to set this up and, and demand it, that this is what's going to happen, because there's issues like this that happen all, every week, there's something going on. And you can't wait three or four or five weeks, you know, to get the thing taken care of. I mean, when I see the stuff, I bring it up to the contractor and they take care of it. But these are things that are, th- these would be documented at the meetings, and minutes of meetings are taken, and, you know, they, they'll execute them that way. So, uh, I, I think, Phil, you should be setting those meetings up on a weekly basis.
Well, as you all know, Paul was running the meeting or running with the contractor, but I surely can make a note of that, and we'll get ahold of Kevin, the architect, and set that up.
Tell him we want weekly meetings.
And do we have, what, what is the arrangement, uh, for cleaning?
Uh, the bids are going to be open tomorrow.
Okay.
So, but in the meantime, I can surely get, uh, Karen over here to do something for you people, so, you know, I mean, she's done it in the past, she's done a good job here.
Get her over here, and I, I mean, just because we don't have somebody cleaning, we should have an alternative.
So, that, that takes care of the, the cleaning, near term and longer term. What about the rugs? Are they all gone, when they going?
Well, again...
Get those orchestrated.
It's a matter of moving, and it's a matter of the department head or the, or the Board of Health, we can surely take the one out by the stairs, but everything else has to be packaged up like the Council on Aging did before we removed the rugs.
What you do is you go in and you cut the rug in the center, take half, threw them out, move the stuff over to the other half of the room, and take the other half of the rug out.
Anyway, just coordinated with...
Still has to be coordinated with.
Coordinated with Board of Health and coordinated with Stanley.
Stanley's is the hardest room because his has got a lot of maps and stuff in, and there's a lot of, a lot of heavy stuff in there.
There's furniture in there as well.
Yeah. But the big thing is if you take a utility knife, you can cut around all that stuff and get it all out, the most of it, and then move the stuff around right in place.
A little cooperation, that's what we're looking for.
But you've got to set it up.
I'm really in for Stanley for today's Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, and of course the office is closed on Friday.
Yeah.
And then he'll be back again Monday, we don't...
And then, Jane, you're working relocation and the meals, for meals and exercise.
Everything's been removed, I know.
Are the offices clean on, on this side of the hall too?
They're only clean when we let the people in.
Uh, is that possible?
Especially in our Board of Health and...
I mean, do you, do you have cleaners sign, uh, contracts of confidentiality, so that they can go in and clean and that?
No, because, no.
No?
We don't do that, no. Because it was only, it was same with the police, when only, whenever, the only time that office gets cleaned is when there's a police officer there. That's the only time.
Otherwise, we won't, you know, that, like in our office, there's stuff in there that has to be...
I mean, hospitals get cleaned, doctors' offices, so...
Yeah.
I just thought agreements of confidentiality, you know, by a cleaning company.
That's something we'll have to, Phil's going to have to...
Maybe get a thorough, more thorough cleaning of the facility, especially down here.
Anything else? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we have a vacancy on the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Volunteer, Ms. Betsy Speeder. Is there a motion to approve appointment of Ms. Speeder for a three-year term of office to the Agricultural Advisory Committee?
Move we appoint Betsy Speeder to three-year position on the Agricultural Advisory Committee effective nine, ten, thirteen.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion to approve ambulance payment, the amount of three, five hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-one cents for the month of August?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Good to see you come down, Ellen.
Phil, a couple items there.
A couple things, uh, we paved Plain Road and Circle Drive yesterday, uh, so we will be bringing the line company in to paint the lines now that all the paving is complete. Uh, and the other thing is, what you have in front of you in the packet about comprehensive environmentals, um, contract for the second phase of the water main, transmission main project.
Where are we at? I know you talked to Peter Colcott about possibly getting money for the second phase here going underneath ninety-one.
I have not heard back from him. I have not heard back from him.
All right, that's something we really should...
Yes, you know, he asked, he asked for the additional costs and...
That's what, about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand, something like that?
It's three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
It's a hundred thousand. Well, it's ninety thousand and change for the engineering service fees, which you have in front of you today, and the actual construction's about two hundred and fifty thousand extra to jack under ninety-one, plus the permitting.
Okay, we've, uh, answered the immediate, uh, the variance requirements for the Architectural Advisory Board for the, with respect to the policy and, uh, a couple of items that they had asked for information on. But, you know, for, for Paul, key, if you'd really, we, he needs to go through that report because there's a whole series of things that are due to that Architectural Advisory Board, on when, whether they're complete and/or by their suspense date, and we just need to be on top of those and get those in. I don't know if you all read the, the package that finally went in on the thirteenth of September on Mass Works, like Mark, I think Mike did a...
Yeah.
Did a very nice job on that.
He was submitting, right.
Yeah, he did a, did a good job.
Did an excellent job.
We worked very hard to the last minute.
Yeah, some things flew at the last minute, you guys on vacation there, but that was, it worked out good. We did get a letter from Frank and, you know, so all moving forward.
It looked, it looked good, I mean...
It's a good package to put forward this time, I feel.
We got the letter, I think, what, the day before, or that morning?
That day.
It's the middle. So...
Called Just in Time.
They're gonna get us one way or the other?
A park.
Park.
Over here in front of the former, on the site of the old School Street School. Where are we, um, I've been gone here for a little while, Mr. Betsel's...
On School Street?
Plea for help on the park project.
School Street School was, uh...
We had the, uh...
We had our meeting on...
The wiring, excuse me, the cables, Verizon and telephone.
Verizon is...
They're looking for money, that's what they're looking for.
They're still looking for money.
Yeah.
Uh, I did look at that pole for some unknown reason, and I can't figure out why, but Western Mass did set that pole, so... Normally, in this area, it's a joint, and when they, they're all joint poles, but every area has either the phone company set or electric set. Now, the electric set there, they ran their stuff underground, we put, we put all the conduits in on, because that's the way it goes. Now, the phone company has to move their, if, if we, if we remove that old pole on this side of the road, they're gonna have to reroute their cable from the pole across the street down to the next pole on, across the street, over to this new pole, down and everything else. And, um, I'm still kinda trying to work on it, but I, I don't foresee any big change in the, because everything basically is run out of, uh... Out of a district, different area right now, and, you know, the, the old, you know, where you could call somebody up and say, hey, do this and...
It's my understanding that there's two additional conduits under the ground that we put in.
Right.
Why can't we just run an underground service to the new, to the building and just cut those off?
Oh, we can do that, but you're still gonna hook to their system, that's what, I mean, they'll, they'll put all that in, that's not an issue.
But are they looking for fees to put that in, or...
We would still have to put that in, they would have to install it from their pole.
Why can't they come down to the existing pole that they're on now and just come down, go on the ground and tie into the conduit?
I don't want that pole there, number one. I know, what do you want, that old pole, it's gonna fall over pretty soon.
So you wanna take, you wanna take it out of there?
Yeah, I mean, it's an old pole, you know, so...
Well, the cost factor there is the two hundred and twenty-five dollars, they want to engineer it, and then the cost of rerouting the wire, which they'll come up with a cost after they engineer it.
And this is Comcast?
This Comcast is moved.
Comcast moved right away, I called them up and they...
This is Verizon.
This is Verizon, just the telephone line.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Well, the rec folks don't have any money for this.
So...
Can, uh, facilities maintenance?
You know, I hate to keep tapping facilities maintenance because...
I'm so glad we have a account.
We went over a budget, and matter of fact, I think I brought, brought up the fact that Phil should be putting more into the facilities.
Yes.
And we also, you know, and at our financial meetings, it was kind of, well, can we cut this, can we cut that, and we can, you know?
It's not the facilities maintenance, it would be the, which we call it, the other one that we have for consulting work and stuff like that.
That's facilities maintenance.
That's what it is.
That was all combined right in, yeah.
Remember, we gave, we didn't give, we gave them the assignment for facility responsibility with no manpower, so we gave them some dollars to use for contract purposes.
Right.
That are being used for...
But what do we have, what do we have left in there, because we wanted to do the roof and stuff for that, too, that school?
Yeah, I mean, there's money in there, but if you keep tapping this account, I can tell you it'll go deficit again, so...
Actually, did you just give them that estimate on that?
I did.
That's another...
But again, you don't only just have the Verizon issue over there, you have the broadband issue over there, the new broadband issue.
That's Comcast.
No.
That is not Comcast, that's, that's...
Oh, that's that new one they...
G four S or something.
G four S.
I contacted them, they're aware of it, but I'm sure they're gonna come back and say the same thing.
The other thing I'm not sure of, I don't know much about, there's a G four S broadband, whatever you call it. Now, I don't know if that's available to handle the phone system, too, or not, I mean...
I couldn't tell you.
I think it was just for cable.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was from, the government wanted that in every town, every community, every...
Yeah, it's fiber optics.
But that's just for basically the municipalities, not...
Right.
Right, yeah, that's...
For individual homes.
Yeah, but isn't that, their, their plan is to expand through to homeowners.
Right.
Right now, they're just providing it for the municipalities.
Well, no, we're dead in the water unless we...
It's just the wire.
They can't finish the project, and they've, they've gone this far.
But you, you did get ahold of that, the broadband, right, and they said they were gonna move it, so...
And it's just Verizon, I mean, you wanna spend a two twenty-five to have it engineered, I'm sure they'll more than likely take our money and engineer it, and come up with a cost estimate to change the wires that the town will be responsible to pay.
If we cut the wire and just roll them up and leave them by the pole, we tell them to rerun it.
So, I mean, I, I will make, I mean, I have the email, I have all the contact to do it, so we'll just move ahead, let's just move ahead.
I would recommend that the Board authorize expenditure, this relatively small amount, to get this thing...
For now.
For now, to get this thing engineered.
Let's get it engineered and see what the cost is, I mean, it was the same thing with the light up on Circle Drive, it was the same thing, they had to go up there, do a little engineering work, and then we paid up, you know, we had to pay for the light costs, but it is what it is.
Because it'll, it brings this whole thing to a halt, and they can't finish the project.
I just, I just wanna say, I mean, municipality...
We've had some volunteers who've worked hard to get it this far.
They come in and, and they do, they ask for a lot from us, okay? Throughout the year, they, they ask us for poll hearings, they ask us for this, and so on. Maybe the fees oughta go up then, if that's the case, if they can't do it for us, we're doing it for them, why can't they take a look at, you know, what we're doing for them, and, and maybe it's an even wash here, and that's something you need to negotiate with them.
It came about this close to telling the guy the same thing, what you just said, but I said, I better not, you know?
That's exactly right, I'm tired of that, you know, they, they're looking for the money, and, and, you know, so are we, so we're in the same boat, so when they come looking for something, they're gonna pay just like we have to pay.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
We should look at our fee structure every year.
No, find out from them how much it's gonna cost, and that's what will go up on our fee schedule, period, um, for that.
Well, you're, is there any issue about pursuing the, at least the stage one, the...
Engineering costs.
Engineering. Let them, let them, we'll pay the two, the fee to go get it engineered.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll call him, I'm telling the same thing.
Bobby and the company here can't, can't move forward.
Deal with that, and then we'll deal with ours on top of that, so if they wanna make a deal with us, we'll sit down and make a deal with them, but other than that, um, we'll look at our stuff and they look at theirs, so... Uh, as far as the fencing, uh, we ran into another snag over at the, with the generator system over there, um, they were supposed to, they dug out, um, for the piping to come across, and then I went over there and took a look at it, and there was a lot of clay in the dirt underneath the generator, even though they dug down eighteen inches. So, I got a whole mark, and they're gonna have to go down about three feet to get underneath that clay base and put stone in, and Phil says he'd have the highway department, did they bring the stone over there yet?
No, I asked the guy when they're gonna be ready, I don't want a pile of stone sitting out there, let them excavate it, and we'll bring them the stone.
So, that was a little snag that they had, uh, I, I didn't want them to put the stone over the, because it's just gonna heave and we'd have more of a problem, and we'd be back to, you know, same as the elementary school, so... Um, glad I, I stopped in and look at, I try to stop in there a few times a week to see what's going on there. And, um, so, and then from there, they can put the fence up, um, and spread the rest of the wood chips, that can be done. So that's all set, so, the other thing, I talked to Mike, um, what's his name, from Fish Tales?
Yeah.
And he's a little concerned at the ball with them playing basketball with the hoops where they're at, the ball comes over the fence sometimes and pounds against the building, um, so I'm gonna bring that to the attention of the, um, Recreation Department, they may have to put some kind of a netting, uh, to stop the ball from going over.
But they're not playing on that end, 'cause the hoops aren't on...
Yeah, but the ball, sometimes when they throw it back out, it'll bounce and it'll go over, depends on what the kids are doing. And, um, so it's a, it's a matter of policing the kids for the time being and letting them know that what's happening and to be mindful of the neighborhood. Try to work with everybody and keep everybody happy. That's all I've got on that.
Couple things from Town Administrator, we saw on the procurement certification training program. Town hall renovations, largely on track, found some asbestos tile under the former collector's office, requiring abatement, and this is impacting schedule a little bit, because they, it's gonna delay finishing the server rooms. Starting, I guess, yesterday over here in the new stairs at the southeast corner of the building. Police, fire, looking into an on-demand heating system as opposed to what was originally designed, I don't know what...
Yes, yeah, what they had, okay, in the fire building, they had two gas hot water heaters, two gas, I think it was thirty or forty gallon hot water heaters. And originally, I, when we were going through this, I suggested that we put an on-demand unit in there, because that's all we needed. Well, they thought in, in the process that they, it was cheaper for them to go with two thirty or forty gallon units. And I didn't realize that, and when I asked about that during the job meeting, they said that, well, that's what they figured. Somebody's making decisions without us knowing about the decision, so, but they felt that it was cheaper to put it out for bid that way, so now, uh, what I asked is the cost of putting in a on-demand heating unit for hot water only, and would save on that, and, and if the price was too much, um, my suggestion to this board is not put it in, not let them put it in, and we'll hire our own contractor and we'll put it in afterwards. Okay? Because over there, you don't need, there's not a lot of hot water that's being used over there.
Why aren't we using that, um... Heating system we paid money for in that loop, loop section in the floor? That's the best heat there is.
Too expensive, he told me, that's why they weren't using it, too expensive to put it in. They're just, just the units to put the thing in, that's what Mark said. There's a lot of changes that I didn't know about, that's why, there was so many things...
No, but I mean, we already, we already have that stuff on the floor.
I know, that was, that's what we're putting in, but we put it in originally for geothermal, that's what we talked about. And then you wanted it to put in, put that heating system in the floor, and then when they came up with their cost estimates, it was changed to, uh, to what it is today. There was a lot of changes that I wasn't aware of, I don't know if you were aware of, Phil?
No, the only thing that, you know, caught my eye now about, you know, the hot water boiler for that system is the rebates from Berkshire Gas, 'cause they're pretty significant.
The rebates?
For a hot water boiler to...
Boiler to run in.
To run that, to run that radiant floor heat, they're pretty significant now.
Okay, I didn't...
You know, I'm, I'm just saying that maybe he better take another look at that.
Well, that's why I brought up the, because the hot water heater, we can get, what, eight hundred dollars off?
Yeah, and I think for the top of the, the top boiler, hot water boiler, for a commercial building's twelve thousand dollar rebate.
Yeah, but to redesign it now and do all different...
I'm just saying, it caught my eye, it caught my eye.
Yeah.
That the rebates that they're giving for that.
That's, that's what I brought up, you know?
That floor heat, I mean, you can't beat it. You, you shouldn't hear anybody complaining about their feet being cold, because the heat's coming out of, out of the concrete, you know? And that's the reason we put it in, and I, while it wasn't so much for the geothermal, because we figured it was just the best...
So, if we start changing too many things now, it's gonna cost us a lot of money.
I understand that, I've been down that road.
But there are some things I can't, you know, I can't see, and that's one, to have two, you know, thirty or forty gallon hot water heater tanks running all the time, when you can have it on-demand, that will only use the gas when, when it's needed. That's the same as in the fire department now, I was over there yesterday talking to Bill, and there's another hot water heater over there, forty gallon, up on the wall, and, and that should be changed out, because that's all they use it for, is washing their hands. So, to me, they make Sebo Electron out here, they make the little electric units to go right next to your sink.
Yeah.
And they're high energy efficient, and it'd be a lot cheaper than just running that, or they make small gas units to go on the wall, too. They, these are things that we can cut our gas consumption down a lot, we just put in and change, and then, then we get rebates back from the gas company for doing it, too, so...
Everything, everything from a thermostat to the unit, they give you the rebate.
Exactly, so, um, that's something that you, you should be on top of and see if we can get those things done, yeah.
Center School walked through the building on September tenth, and this is our study group with respect to Center School and exercising the grant, looking at coming up with, uh, diff... Securing the services of a contractor to take on the task of assessing the building, its facility condition, and doing the market analysis as to best uses, and, and they had a walkthrough of some potential consultants on September tenth.
Understanding a few people.
Yeah, they, they did.
Lot of people.
The other thing that happened over here in the ambulance building, and I, I made it to the meeting, I wasn't, I had a doctor's appointment, but I made it back in time for the meeting, but what came out of the meeting is that they were just gonna have a concrete floor in the ambulance area where the, uh, they do the training and stuff for CPR, and they wanted a, a wood floor, you know, something that was insulated and cushioned. And that's, again, they said, you know, well, it was cheaper to figure the concrete in, and I said, wait a minute, you know, I mean, our guys gotta work on here, and this is not what we talked about originally. So, they looked at, um, an added cost of, of what it would cost for a wood floor that's insulated to put in there, okay, so, um, you know... From what we wanted originally to what we, we were gonna get, was somebody's been changing these things, and I, I don't know how they're getting changed, okay, but anyway, to stay on top of it.
For some reason, I'm thinking... I'm, I'm, I'm thinking the building inspector had said at one time that, again, it'll be another mold issue. So, do we wanna, we're, we're dealing with a mold issue here, are we gonna deal with one over there in a few years?
Yeah, but they put a vapor barrier down first, that's what he talked about.
Yeah, right, well, I like it.
Yeah, you can do it there, you can't do it here, vapor barrier. See, if they, originally, before we put the tile down, if they put an epoxy sealer, barrier on this floor here, we wouldn't probably have half the problem we're having right now.
Yeah, well, like I said, the, the best thing, I would've, I would've, if we, you've got that floor half torn up already.
And then in this building, I wanted to make sure that they didn't touch any of the moldings up in the ceiling in the gymnasium. Uh, they were talking about cutting through the moldings and stuff, and, and it didn't make any difference, 'cause you're going sheet rock against wood, no matter where you're at, and I said, you know, for some reason down the road, we wanted to expose those beams, you're gonna have a slot in the, in the molding, you know, and then what are you gonna do with the pieces, you can't match it, so, uh, I was, you know, I told them, keep it historically intact, and, and so that's what they're doing, so...
You know, maybe, uh, maybe it'd be worthwhile just to have a, one of our first future sessions, just kinda...
Have a walkthrough.
Walkthrough of all our facility projects, kinda where we are, what the issues are.
Gotta stay on, on top of it, yeah, because, uh...
Well, we're, we're not trying to micromanage the thing, and we gotta be careful about change orders, 'cause...
Right, exactly. But there are some, you know, like this on-demand heater and stuff like that, that, um... You don't want it to screw up the architecture of the building either, for future...
Paying architect good money to give us his best, so I think I'm gonna...
Well, the less, less we, we spend, you know, I guess the other thing, I don't know if you, did you get into this part yet, this architectural E L? In your package?
We're, we're, we're gonna get to it.
Okay, you didn't get to it yet.
That's what he was talking about, weren't you?
Uh, well, but...
Well, this is on handrails, and I'm a little confused what's going on with the handrails.
Just moving them, it, it, it turns out, it turns out that, uh...
The heights are wrong.
The heights are wrong, so, it was, we, early on, we asked for a variance, and then they came, the Architectural Advisory Board, well, was reluctant to grant that variance, and Architect E L came back, and this is one of the ones they had to answer, I think by the twentieth of September, uh, saying, hey, we'll just move the thing up X number of inches, I don't know how it was, and that's all we have to do, and, and the Architectural Advisory Board is okay, so it was a, a big deal.
Because, I mean, talk, talk about architect, I mean, just to move a handrail, we got six pages here that we must've paid thousands of dollars... Because, I mean, talk, talk about, I mean, just to move a handrail, we got six pages here that we must have paid thousands of dollars for, that we could have just moved it. You know, it's.
Well, you had to answer the mail. I mean, it didn't comply.
Oh, boy.
Now, we're showing how we're gonna, we're going to comply as opposed to argue with them.
I, I mean, they have some here that the handrail is short of the nosing on the stairs by a half inch or three-quarter. And, you know, I'm not sure what they're going to do with that. To me, if we had to, we'd just put a boot on the end of the railing and extend it. Okay? It's like, oh, my god, you know.
Well, I'm not on the Architectural Advisory Board, but.
Talk about frustrations here.
They sit there with their codes. Actually, they're trying to be helpful. The, the last thing, we're on track with our audit. We have, finally, from the treasurer to our accountant, all that he needed to do to close out, and he's, he's working all that. And the auditor is here.
He started yesterday.
He started, started yesterday.
Okay, so Scanlon is done with his work?
No.
No.
No, but one, the auditor representing the audit firm
Was here.
Is here and gathering information and.
Scanlon was supposed to be done September thirtieth.
Well, Mike just got the information he needed to close out days ago. So we can't blame Mike.
No, I'm not blaming Mike. I'm just, Scanlon was supposed to come in and help Mike get all this stuff done beginning of September.
Scanlon needed to pick up from when Mike finished.
Okay, that just happened.
That just happened. So now, they're picking up now.
Okay.
Everything seems to be on track, finally, but.
Okay, as long as we can finish by December first, that way, because we can't, we can't pay anything, okay, until we get that approved. Unless we get the audit done, and it's not, it's not written in the written form, and that the leasing company will take that as a, a letter of, of intent. They might do an informal.
The audit's complete, just putting it, the pieces on paper.
Yeah, exactly, so. But that's going to have to be finagling on your part, and.
I'm trying. I'm doing my best.
Okay.
There was a, in your package, a notice of public hearing, Berkshire Gas. Request for comments. I'm assuming we have no comments.
Berkshire Gas?
Notice of public hearing and request for comments, Department of Public Utilities. We got this.
Yeah, it's.
We don't.
We don't.
We don't have any comment.
You get them from
From all of them.
All of them.
I'm still looking.
Yeah, we're.
Well, that's kind of it.
Didn't get it?
Maybe it's this one. Nope. I didn't get it.
Here.
What do we got?
I'm proposing we, we have no comment.
Is this the one for the Hampshire cog?
No, no, we're going to get to it in a second.
This is just the radiant heaters, what they're looking for.
Right. It's just a notice.
Jeff, just before you move on, you have to go back to CEI's contract.
I'm going to.
Okay.
I'm going to get, if I don't get to it here.
Okay.
Pull my chain.
Yep, okay.
Got letters of agreement in the package between Open Space, Town of Hatfield, Community Preservation. And they're asking for the selectmen to sign off along with others. And all this is, is the, I guess this is their standard.
I move that we authorize the chair to, to sign off on these.
Okay. Is there a second? All right.
For the heating system, and the other one was for the.
This is, what we're talking about is town meeting approved CPC grant, a couple of grants, one concerning a park adjacent to Town Hall and the site of the Old Smith Academy. And the second one
Heating system.
On, oh, the HVAC system in, in here. And just an agreement about how the financial transaction takes place. HCOG. Did everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Any issue with?
No, I also told Paul to make sure that he puts on our agenda this year, so we can have that for the solar.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was.
He said he put it on his list.
So that the An article for town meetings such as the board of selectmen are authorized to enter into contracts exceeding three years. And this is to allow us to enter into agreement with HCOG concerning net metering.
Right.
Long-term contracts.
Just didn't want everybody.
Is there a motion to authorize me to sign this contract with HCOG?
So.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
This is simply a, HCOG has had a long-running issue with Department of Public Utilities. And it's been over a couple of years now. And finally, the DPU proposed some revision to the agreements that HCOG had negotiated with various communities to include Hatfield, such that it's not really HCOG, but rather the communities that are in the lead. And HCOG is simply serving as our agent, administrative agent. Don't ask me how that, why that makes such a difference to the Department of Public Utilities, but.
Just the Pioneer Valley Planning Council, the five thousand that we have to put in every year.
No, this is, no, this is the this is a grant for Center School. And remember, we, we engaged
But I thought that was a fifty thousand.
PVPC. Yeah, it's a fifty thousand dollar grant, but in the grant, it allows for five thousand dollars for the contract management, the grant management.
Okay, that's what this is here.
And, and for PVPC, and this is simply the.
All right, I move we authorize the chair to sign the agreement between PVPC. Is that, is that a conflict with you or not?
No.
No? Okay.
This is a disclosure report of financial interest in a project assisted by Massachusetts Small Cities Program.
Okay.
This has to do with Pioneer Valley, as shown in our application to the state for the grant of fifty thousand dollars regarding Center School, to serve as our agent.
I didn't know, because you were associated with, with them, I didn't know if that was a, a conflict or not.
So is there a question?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, I have that somewhere. Is this one here?
Yes.
Okay. This is CEI is acting as our engineer for the water transmission main. We've had two, two changes. The one, Mr. Lesko touched on earlier, regarding the line and its route now going underneath Interstate ninety-one on the railroad as a, as a, and underneath ninety-one, as opposed to using the utility bay on the bridge on Chester Street. Which then required some re-engineering. And second, and second, apparently, the original plan was to run the pipe underneath the Mill River. And subsequently, that plan's been changed to run over the Mill River at our request, apparently.
Correct.
To facilitate maintenance or access. And so we have here an amendment to our engineering services agreement with them to cover down the costs of those change orders.
Right. Just, just for the public's view, because I, I received the call. And the person kind of questioned, why are we going under now? We should have known this before, but in reality, we, we, as this engineering firm, we're talking about going under the ninety-one bridge to begin with. But what happened was, they did all the engineering, and then the state came along. The Department of Transportation, they inspected their bridge, they found out that it, it wouldn't hold our water main. And so then, now they are denying us the use of a bay on that bridge unless we fix the bridge, which I personally, and I think the rest of the board, and probably everybody in town feels, there's no way we're going to do it, so. Now, this is why we are going to go under Route ninety-one, so I just want to assure everybody that the engineering firm that we have had originally
Coordinated.
Coordinated with the state, by the way, to go over the bridge, and it was okayed until they inspected it, so. This is why we're in fixing, this is why I personally feel that the state should pay for us going under ninety-one. And because we can't use their bridge, so.
Right, we're, we're in contact with Representative Colcott, and I've told him just that, and we're looking for three hundred thousand from the state. Let them flip the bill on that. Because that's what it's costing us to, to go underneath ninety-one.
They're mostly to approve execution of this amendment to the letter agreement for engineering services for the water transmission main.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right. So the original is in the signature package that you have to sign.
Yeah. Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, we just got the planning board, the.
Mentioned that right at the front.
Yeah.
I mentioned that in announcements.
The one with there?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything else, I don't think.
Okay, did you have any?
No, I want to.
Okay, we talked about schedule for the, for some reason, I had next Tuesday is another meeting. And you reminded
Second and fourth.
You reminded Paul, and Paul had it on that date, because that's where I got it from. It's the second Tuesday. So we're going to meet now on the eighth.
Of October?
Eighth of October.
The first and third Tuesdays are my.
Got it. The first and third?
The first and third are mine with the Western Mass Homeland Security Council, Advisory Council meetings. And then the second and fourth are our selectmen.
Okay. I'm gone on the twenty-second, that's the Now, there's a fifth, there's a fifth Tuesday in October.
We could do it, we could do it.
Would it be inconvenient to do it on the fifth Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, as opposed to the twenty-second?
Let me look at mine, I'll tell you in a second here. In October, you're talking?
Yes.
I can do it on twenty-ninth, I'm open.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a Tuesday. Okay, so our next two meetings will be the eighth and then on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
All right, any other business?
Yeah, one, Phil gave us an estimate for the roof next door here. Let me just clear this out. Okay, eighty-five hundred dollars to put the roof on the the, the fire station here and replace the door. That's, that's going into the fire station. The jam stays the same to get it looking back to normal. Can we do that with what we have, Phil, or not?
As of today, yes.
Again, I hate tipping into that.
Well, but.
Because if we have a big emergency, it's been like.
That's one of the things that we've been.
Yeah, but I mean, can we cut it down a little bit? Can we, do we have to go by, you know, a twelve by twelve?
Yeah, there's no, because right now, you've got a four-foot, four-foot door walkway coming out of there. And if you go too small, it's going to look like a little, it's not going to look good. Even the builder said it's not going to look good. So you're going to have to go, the original one was ten by ten, but this one's twelve by twelve. Because it comes out just past the sidewalk, where the sidewalk is.
What's that going to have for, because that steps up.
I mean, I'd like to see it go in there. The other thing is, I'd like to, I'd also like a running tally of what's left in that account. Maybe even set up separate spreadsheets, so we know what we're spending the money on there and what, how much is left. I have a spreadsheet from the assessing that will give us just that. We can run a separate account, find out exactly what we're spending on, what money's left in there.
On the building maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that would be the first thing that I'd be asking too, so.
Yeah.
I mean, eighty-five hundred is.
I think I gave that to you at one time. If you don't have it, I got it, I'll give it to you again. And then just copy in what we've got for, for a balance, and then we know what we've got left on an ongoing basis. And have to check with Mike. You just have to monitor it.
Do we have to do this today?
Well, we, when's he want to get started on it?
The only, only reason, if you want to take a look at.
I want to see.
So there's. See what the account is, what, what leans we had against the account?
There's not much against that account.
Okay.
Because the other account is, don't forget, you have two, you have facilities
Yeah.
Maintenance, and you have the public buildings maintenance.
Yeah.
So the public buildings maintenance account is the cleaning service, the utilities, all that. So we know that that's pretty good. What we need in that account is there. The other one was just for these things that come up. And we really haven't used that much out of there, so. I mean, I know there's a pretty good balance in there as of today.
I'd like to move that we move forward on that roof and get it done before winter, and, and get that door fixed and changed, and and get it looking presentable there, and that way, they can finish up all the wood chips and stuff like that around. And I know they got trash bins and stuff like that to put in there, and.
That's all sitting over in the garage, ready to go.
Yeah. So this would help clean up that whole front.
We love spending money in this town.
My money.
Your money. No, my money.
Your money.
My money that I borrowed you. How many, what do you figure we have in there? I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm just looking at.
No, I.
I like the rainy day fund myself, you know, I like to have the money there.
Let me give you, give me two seconds, and I'll get that right for you.
I mean, just in case something major happens.
We can delay one week, or.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
We'll, we'll, we'll take this up. Jan is still.
I just don't want to be spending money. I mean, yes, we have to, but.
It's a matter of spending money, or else, if you want to keep looking at the town center like a.
Just turn your head.
It's in my head. Well, if you take a look at that, if your house looked like that, I'm sure you'd be doing something about it. And I take pride in what the town looks like, and that doesn't look too good right now, so. I, I feel that we should fix it and fix it now.
I just want to see what we have available. I have no idea. Neither one of us have any, I, I.
We had, what, forty thousand dollars in that account?
I want to make these look good. But on the other hand, if something fails, whether it be in this building or any other building around.
If it fails, Jan, that's what we have, the finance reserve is, it's an unexpected item. Okay, that's where you go.
Again, but then, if you're still spending money, then I.
Well, it's spending money to make it look good, and that's the problem here. I, I mean, to keep looking at an eyesore is not good. Okay, we've got too many of those around town as it is. So.
Well.
So my motion is to spend the eighty-five hundred dollars and put the roof over the, over the fire station doorway, and fancy that up, take that brick walls down, and, and make it look presentable. So the Recreation Department can finish all around there, and it'll look like a finished project.
How do you feel? I mean, there's three of us here, so.
Well, we're going to do something there, I know we are.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, you can second that if you would like.
Yes, please.
All right. All right. We're gonna take a five-minute delay.
Put us on hold, John. Tell me when you're ready.
You're on.
Motion's on the floor. There's eight, how much you say, thirty thousand?
Six hundred and twenty.
Thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty. I move that we take eighty-five hundred dollars out of thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, leaving about twenty-two thousand dollars left.
I'll second it for discussion.
Oh, good. Thank you. What's this thing gonna look like? I mean, I know, I realize.
It's just the hip roof that was originally on there.
I know, but now is it gonna be right on the, the existing?
No. They're leaving the wa, you know the brick walls? They're cutting them off three feet, maybe, three feet high. They're gonna have a shelf there.
Capping it.
And cap that, cap the brick.
Yeah.
Then the porch will extend out. So it's gonna still be the two steps to get up into the door.
Okay.
It's not gonna be an even floor.
So that'll be.
Yeah, it can't be an even floor because of the, the fire department floor is higher than the playground. So it has to be the two steps. The steps aren't gonna be touched except for the sidewalls that are coming down.
And remove the carpet, that's all.
How about the electrical work in there? Is that gonna be, is that included in here? There is a light in there. Are you gonna have a continual light?
What was that?
There was a light there. I don't know, I mean, it's been disconnected, but.
I don't believe there is a light there.
There was.
In between the two?
Yeah. It had it disconnected.
If it's there, then it would be, that's not a problem. It would go right back up in there.
Actually, you've gotta have a light because it's an entranceway. But that isn't included in here.
We'll make sure it is.
Well, the prices going up. Go ahead. Christmas present. I'll second it. Or you did second it. Okay. I, I mean, does this guy think it's gonna look good in that building?
Yeah, I mean, we have them over there.
It's gonna look just like what the original looked like on the Milkman School. It's gonna be a hip roof coming right straight out from the building. It's not gonna be a peaked roof. It's gonna be a hip roof, which is angled on three sides and then going into the.
I mean, we have to do something with that door anyways, so. All right.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Will we adjourn?
Any other business?
Oh.
No, I don't have no more money.
No, there was something with you. Oh, did you check with Tony about the gates he had up at the reservoir?
No, I didn't, no.
Who put them down here at the highway garage?
Well, we're doing a little really arranging there anyway, so.
Yeah.
Because that was on our list for quite some time here. Tony said he had some gates up there. We can just use the gates and bring them down here. And the other thing is they were cutting the bollards out of the ambulance department, the big round bollards. And I told them to save them and you guys will pick them up. We can use them around hydrants and stuff like that. You don't want to, you don't want to scrap those.
Yeah, actually, Tony wanted a couple poles for some hydrant. That keeps getting.
Make sure you get, you pick those up. They don't leave. Other than that, that's all I have.
Motion adjourned?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.